Hello my friends, dear readers. Today, we're gonna do three pranayama techniques to ignite the fire within. When we wake up in the morning, there's so many disturbances, distractions. Sometimes we just wake up out of bed, we take a shower, and already the mind starts working. The impressions from the day before, all the talks, all the quarrels, all the positive, whatever it is, it will all pop up in your mind. And already so much mental activity right in the early morning. And sometimes we get stuck into all this thinking from the day before, things we couldn't digest, we couldn't let go, and then we carry it with us. Then the energy is already blocked when we wake up early in the morning. So to make sure that the energy can flow, that we can be really hundred percent ourselves, it's important to use some strong breathing techniques to open up. Although I'm more fan of calm breathing techniques, because I experienced myself when you breathe calm, you can really go deep. But sometimes, or most of us, most of the time, we need these strong techniques to really open up. Because the energy can't flow, we can't be happy when energy is stuck. Because the prana originates here in the heart center. If the energy can't flow properly, the heart chakra is covered, doesn't spin properly, and then we can't experience joy, love, peace, happiness, harmony, and we can't share it with others. So it's so important to really open up, to be in the flow state. Atma, flow. Atma means the body, the mind, and the soul. And flow, to come into the flow state of life, to work with the body, to work with the mind, and to experience yourself inside the body, having a human experience, being the observer of your thinking, of your thoughts, being the consciousness, the spiritual being within. And these techniques will help you to come to this realization, who you truly are. And then the energy is moving, the energy is flowing. And the life is so wonderful. We're gonna do three techniques. The first one will be spinal breathing, to open up the energy system, to create some movement in the spine, to activate all the chakras. Then, we're gonna do chit shakti, prakriya pranayama, some very energizing technique, opens up the energy channels. Chit shakti is the spiritual potency. Chit means awareness, consciousness, knowledge, wisdom. Shakti is the power, the strength. So chit shakti awakens really our true potential. And then we end the session with something I learned myself just recently, called the tummo breathing, from the Tibetan monks. It's a technique to really ignite the fire within, to really activate agni, the fire of digestion. There's various techniques. This is a form of buzz trigger, where you inhale, belly, chest, you open up, and you exhale with more pursed lips. You're gonna do fifteen, twenty breaths. Then you hold the breath after the inhalation. You relax, and you squeeze the perineum muscle. This will ignite the fire even more. You can really focus on the root chakra, activate the mula bandha, squeeze, and focus on the energy. You can imagine some fire burning in the root chakra. You hold the breath, then here's the exhale. You open the mula bandha, you exhale slowly, and hold the breath for another five to ten seconds. Depends on your limitations, on your own pace. Just don't hold the breath too long. We don't want to create any tension, we want to be calm and peaceful in harmony, and feel the flow of prana, make use of each breath. And the prana will get more and more calm, more and more soft, and you can actually feel how you be in touch, in balance, in harmony with the prana energy. Okay, let's get started. Find yourself in a comfortable sitting position. Keep your spine straight, rotate your shoulders. Have a nice, comfortable sitting position. Be on a chair, on the floor, on a cushion, whatever feels right for you. It's all about you feeling safe, feeling peaceful, being in harmony and in balance. Okay, you can close your eyes and focus on your breath. Inhale for four seconds, exhale for four seconds. Feel the sensation of the breath in the nostrils, the change of the temperature with the in and with the exhalation. Connect with the breath. Feel the movement, belly, the diaphragm, the chest. Fill up your lungs with fresh oxygen and connect with the prana field around you. Empty your mind by focusing your awareness on the breath and send yourself in this very present moment. Okay, we're gonna chant the mantra om three times to tune in spiritually. Inhale, and then follow my lead. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Okay, we inhale, slide your hands towards your waist, chest out, arch your back, head slightly up, hold the breath for a short moment. Exhale, round your spine, root yourself, ground yourself, hold the breath. Inhale slowly. Feel the movement of the body. Connect with each breath. Feel the muscles moving, the space we create, the skin stretching, the blood flowing, the energy buzzing. Just be aware of everything. Bring movement into the spine. Make the movements very smooth. Also nicely round your spine with the exhalation, with the inhalation. Bring your shoulder blades together. Feel the tension in your body with each breath. How to release each muscle and create peace and harmony within and without. Close your eyes and follow the movement of prana from the root of your spine, all the way up to your higher energy centers. And then as you exhale, from the crown all the way down to the root chakra, deeply ground yourself. Connect heaven, connect earth. And we, human beings, are in the middle, in between of divinity and of this material world here, where we live and breathe, day by day, minute for minute, each moment. If we are present on this planet earth, connect with the divine, everything will be open, everything will be possible and will unfold in front of you. Open up, letting go, feel the movement of prana. It's not just air we breathe in, some oxygen. We fill our cells, our blood. No, we breathe in the life energy, the life force itself. It's very subtle. Consciously, when you inhale, focus on the prana moving all the way up to your crown, with the exhalation, back to your roots. It is more work in, not a work out. Okay, we can go a little bit faster, breathe faster, breathe deeper. Okay, three more, and then go very fast, as fast as you can, as deep as you can. Five more. And relax. Breathe very gently and soft. Move the body very slow. Focus on the movement within. Okay, the next inhalation, inhale, keep on moving your spine. Also use your arms, or press your shoulder blades together. Hands wide open, chest out, hold for a few seconds. Exhale and praise your heart chakra, go within. Inhale, open up. Bring the awareness now instead of the mula chakra, mula dada chakra, at the ground, deeply within your heart. As you inhale, you pump, you open up the energy center, the anahata chakra, the heart. And as you exhale, deeply absorb this energy in all your cells. And inhale, hold the breath for as long as you can. Don't forget to smile. We don't want to create any tension, just peace and harmony. And whenever you feel the urge to exhale, gently let go, embrace your heart and hold the breath for as long as it is comfortable. And relax, the breathing, relax the body. Feel the opening, the blood flow. Relax your face muscles, especially around the temples, the cheeks, your jawline. Your eyelids very relaxed, and smile. Feel the opening. Acknowledge your state of being at the very moment. Then compare the feeling, the opening, after this session. Okay, slowly open your eyes again. Now we're gonna do chit shakti pranayama. The movements are easy. If you have any problems with dizziness, epilepsy, recent brain surgery on the belly area, or you're pregnant more than four months, problems with high blood pressure, then practice this technique gently. We will inhale, arms up, exhale, we pump. If you have any of these mentioned conditions, you can breathe gently. Always go with your own pace, we don't wanna overdo it. We wanna find peace and harmony. Make use of each breath, feel the movements of the arms. As you inhale, you open up, as you exhale, you letting go. If there's something bothering you at the moment, some feelings, some emotions, some habit, some quarrel with loved ones, let it go with each movement, open up and out. Open, letting go. The focus during the exercise is the heart chakra and the third eye. You're gonna do three times, thirty breaths. After thirty breaths, we inhale, arms up. Also when you pump, the fingers are wide spread, hands are open. When you come down, you make fists, you breathe belly, chest. It's just a small movement. But the focus is on rhythmic calyp breathing. You exhale, I will count for you, then thirties breath. Inhale fully, make yourself long and wide, hold the breath, activate mula bandha, squeeze the perineum muscle. Like if you have to go to toilet, you have to pee, and you hold back your urine. You squeeze, you hold for about five to ten seconds, whatever is comfortable for you, then you release the mula bandha. Slowly and gently exhale, place your hands on your knees. You can apply kyan mutra, or you just place your hands up or down. And then you relax and feel into the practice. Three rounds. Inhale, exhale. And the practice should be fun, no tension, just enjoy the movements. Enjoy the energy rising inside of you. Inhale, arms up, and you follow my rhythm. Fifteen more. Make use of each breath, open up, letting go. Okay, last five. Inhale fully, squeeze the perineum, hold the breath, focus on the third eye, and feel the opening in the heart chakra. Whenever you feel the urge to breathe, release the mula bandha, slowly exhale, and gently place your hands on your knees. And feel your body, feel the blood flow, the energy moving, buzzing in your system. And breathe, focus on your breath. Try to with each breath, make the breathing more soft and calm. No need for deep breathing, just find peace in each moment. Okay, round number two. Again, thirty breaths. Inhale, arms up, and go. Thirty more. Open up, letting go, make use of each breath. Letting go of the toxic waste and open up for the prana field around you. Three more breaths. Inhale, hold the breath, squeeze the perineum, mula bandha active. And whatever you feel like, release, relax, breathe out slowly. And feel your body. Feel the movement of energy in your system. The opening. All your cells are celebrating new life energy, letting go of the old. And breathe. Just focus on the breath. Make your breathing very soft and calm. Okay, round number three. Thirty breaths, now we're gonna do fifteen fast breaths like before. And the last fifteen, you follow my lead. We breathe very slow and gently. Really make use of each breath, of each movement. Really open up and letting go. Inhale, arms up, and go. Slowly. Last five. Make use of each breath. Inhale, hold the breath, squeeze the perineum. Hold for as long as you can. Whenever you feel the urge to breathe again, release the mula bandha and very gently, very slow exhale. And feel inside yourself. Feel the opening in the chest. The active heart chakra. Connect with the heart. Breathe deeply into it. Open up for all good qualities in life. Breathe in prana energy. Breathe in more kindness, more tolerance, humility, compassion, love, wisdom, peace, and harmony. Just open up yourself for this highest states of being. Breathe deeply into your heart. All your awareness, your focus. Connect deeply within. Don't forget to smile and relax your face muscles. Wonderful. Now bring the awareness down to the roots. Connect with your mula dada chakra, the root chakra on the bottom of your spine. Connect with the earth. Feel your sitting muscles. Feel the legs, the thighs, the feet. Connecting with the ground. Deeply root yourself and connect with the energy of mother earth. Imagine fire burning from the root of your spine. Feel the heat within. A fire so strong, it can digest food, greases your metabolism, burns away all fear, all toxins, all habits and negative things in life. Be open for the fire within. As we breathe now, if you like, you can open your eyes, or you remember from before. We're gonna do tummo breathing to ignite the fire within. So as we inhale, belly up to the lungs. You open up your arms, your hands. You open up your arms, your hands, contracting and releasing, opening up from the side. And then purse your lips slightly and blow out the air through your mouth. Close your eyes. Focus on the fire within. Three more breaths. Inhale. Hold the breath, relax your hands on your knees. Hold the breath and squeeze the perineum muscle. Feel the fire from the root of your spine, burning up all the way to your heart center. And you only hold the breath for as long as you comfortably can. Don't overdo it. Relax into this state of being. The present moment, full of life and energy. Then release the bandha, exhale, and again, hold the breath for a couple of seconds. Five to ten seconds, as long as it is comfortable for you. Relax the breathing, inhale, exhale. Okay, round number two. In and out. In, open up. Out, letting go. Purse your lips, put some pressure on the exhalation. We're gonna do five fast ones. And slow. Next inhalation, hold the breath. Squeeze the perineum. Focus on the fire from the root of your spine, all the way up to your chest. Focus, visualize the fire within, expanding all around you. So much power and energy lies within. We just need some fresh air to fan the spark of the divine fire within. Whenever you feel the urge to breathe, first to release the mula bandha. Then exhale slowly and hold the breath again for as long as you comfortably can. During the breath hold, find the peace within, especially after the exhalation. Find the calm and peace, the openness in this very moment. Okay. Round number three. We're gonna start with ten slow ones. Then we're gonna do ten fifteen fast ones, then again, five to ten slow ones. Just follow my lead. Inhale, open up. Okay, faster. And very slow and gently. Inhale, hold the breath. Squeeze the perineum. Focus on the fire within and also focus on your third eye. Bring the fire all the way up to your higher energy centers. Relax into the breath hold. Feel the energy buzzing. Expand the fire of life all around you. Find the peace in the space you created. Hold the breath for as long as you can. Whenever you feel the urge to breathe again, release the mula bandha. Exhale and again, hold the breath. And then relax the breathing, follow the breath. Letting go more and more. Relax the body, relax the mind. And just with a smiling face, observe the breath. Letting go of the breath more and more. Feel the life coming from within. The external breathing is not the only way to maintain your life. This energy, the prana, is already within you. Just connect with your inner source of life. The power of the soul, of the spiritual entity within. Now let go of the breath completely. Just be in the moment and observe. No control, letting go and relax. Look within yourself with your inner eye. Focus on your heart, on your roots, on your ground. And observe yourself from within. The root, the heart and the ground chakra. Feel the divinity from above entering your ground. Feel the earth underneath, the energy from adabumi entering your root. Connect them both in the center of your being. The anahata chakra in the middle of your chest. Breathe into your heart, open up more and more. Then slowly rub your hands together, make them nice, warm and hot. And place them over your eyelids and over your forehead. Deeply look within yourself. What do you see? How do you feel? What is your experience at the moment? Slowly and gently massage your eyelids, your forehead, your skull. Make sure to massage each body part, the temples, the ears, face muscles, the neck, the shoulders, the upper back, the lower back, on the side of the ribs, the abdominal area, the chest, under your armpits. Massage your upper arms and your lower arms. Your hands and your fingers, each finger, gentle massage, both sides. Massage your sitting muscles, your waist, your legs especially, the thighs inside, outside, your knees, your calves and your chin. And you end with the feet by pushing your thumb. Take one foot and push in really nicely with both thumbs. Your heels, your soles, each toe. To release all the energy from the sitting to connect back with the earth, ground ourselves. How do you feel? Hey, please let me know in the comments. What was your state today and how do you feel now? Especially when you're in the flow state. You can feel all of a sudden, the mind is so calm, so peaceful, so empty. All the worries are gone and you feel the heat, the fire, especially in the cold winter days. Tap so much to really come into your natural flow. We practiced now forty-five minutes. You can shorten these techniques or can only do one. When I do it myself, maybe it takes me twenty to thirty minutes. Try it out, repeat, check out other videos. I have also a seven-day breathwork and pranayama course. It's for free, it's on YouTube. So get in touch with the breathing muscles, learn various techniques. And for a week to practice every day for about one hour. This gives you so much insights in your own psyche. Your mental clarity will be better, your emotions, you will flow, you'll be happy and peaceful. There are so many good things happen when we start to use our breath in a conscious way. Thank you so much for joining me today. It was my pleasure to breathe with you. Wish you all the love, all the best. Namaste.